Welcome to the City of West Miami. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. And let's bow our heads and thank the Lord for the daily blessings that we receive, those that we see and those that we don't. We pray especially this evening for all graduating students of the 2015 graduating classes in Miami-Dade County. We pray so that they can develop, so that they can find a mentor in their life, so that they can reach new heights in their careers. This evening, we pray especially for the Miami-Dade County Fire Department, who is represented here this evening by their chief. We pray for all firefighters in all municipalities in Miami-Dade County, for our law enforcement personnel and our servicemen and women who are serving protecting our boundaries. And we ask for many blessings for the residents of the city of West Miami, especially those that are ill, frail, and lonely. We ask the Lord to continue blessing our city and its elected leadership. We ask this in your name, amen.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, Captain?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I mumble something a little confusing, I just came back from Italy, and I don't know if I speak which language to pick. So, this is funny. First of all, you know, before we continue with the, well, no, 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 let's follow the order of the agenda, let's go to item number three.
Roll call. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candy Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Praygo.
Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Mayor, you have a question.
Thank you. Item four, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval, none this evening.
Okay.
Motion.
No, there's no motion, there's no minutes. There's no minutes.
I was reading, and I don't see any discrepancy, I'm making a motion for approval.
Anyway, if you allow me, I would like to deviate a little bit from the order of the agenda. First of all, I would like to recognize in the audience Eric Diaz-Padron, the son of the former mayor, welcome to our city, and he's currently working with our dear Commissioner Rebecca Sosa. So, welcome, thank you. Also, I would like to, before we read the item, I would like to also welcome Maria Reyes, Division Manager from the Fire Department, Miami-Dade. Also, the Chief, David Downey, and the Chief of Staff, Andres Andy Alvarez, welcome to the City of West Miami. And with that, I would like to take item 11A out of order, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11, New Business Agenda Items, item 11A, Presentation of Miami-Dade Fire County Department Annual Report Summarizing the Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Services to the City of West Miami During 2014. This is sponsored by Mayor Mujina, presented by Chief Downey.
Chief, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and manager. Again, my name is Dave Downey, I'm your fire chief, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and present our annual report to you. We have some copies up here in the front, and I know we sent them to you ahead of time as well. Again, a little bit about myself, I've been with the fire service for 34 years, and risen right up through the ranks, and spent 20 of those years riding a truck, so, you know, most of the people in the fire department now think I started as the chief, but I actually did come up through the ranks. Again, introducing my staff, my Chief of Staff, Andy Alvarez, who's here tonight, and Maria Reyes, who really does all the work for us, she's our, runs, oversees our strategic planning, our accreditation, our finance, so she's the one behind the curtain making everything happen. I appreciate them being here. As you know, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue provides you a full-service fire department. We've got, we operate 68 fire stations, over 140 units, and those are staffed by about 2,500 personnel, 2,000 of those are the firefighters. We're one of the 10th largest departments in this nation, and last year, we responded to about 248,000 calls for service here in Miami-Dade County. I'm proud to say that we're one of the largest agencies, fire rescue agencies in the nation that's accredited, and we also, as with the other fire departments in the county, participate in the STEMI Network, which is our heart attack management, and we're in the process now of getting the data published, and I'm going to be happy when everybody reads it, because I think we're going to be able to boast one of the highest survival rates in this country for heart attacks, based on the actions of our paramedics. We're also participating in the stroke network, which is very similar to what we're doing with heart attacks. And having been a paramedic now for over 30 years, I can tell you that when I started, and somebody was having a heart attack or a stroke, you kind of just hope for the best, and we provided medication to provide comfort, but what damage was done, was done. Now, we're seeing a reversal, we're seeing people leaving productive lives and full reversal of the effect, so it's amazing. And we're delivering that care every day here in the streets of Miami-Dade County. Despite all of our budget challenges that we've all had, I'm happy to report that your fire department is strong. We're continuing to add service, we're buying new fire engines, Engine 40 will be getting one of the new fire engines, we purchased 30 new fire engines, they're about to get their new rescue truck, 20 new rescue trucks, we're building stations, and we're hiring firefighters. In fact, it's all over the news, our ad will come out tomorrow, well, at midnight tonight, hiring more, but by the end of this year, I hope to have about 100 more firefighters on the streets. Specific to your city, we've been providing service here since 1981, and last year, we responded to 882 calls within the city of West Miami, with just over 1,200 units, so a lot of times, it takes more than one unit. And that's important to understand, that, you know, it's not just one fire truck or one fire station, it's a fire department. 89% of the calls here in the city are run by Station 40 right behind you here. But, it's important to realize that there's seven other stations within five minutes of this city, and that they comprise seven fire trucks, five rescue trucks, and two chiefs, staffed by 47 firefighters. And I'm proud to say 62% of those are paramedics. So, it's important, and I talked about this last year, even if the fire truck arrives, it's staffed with paramedics, it has the advanced life support equipment to deliver that care as well. So, Engine 40, they might get there, and you said, "Wait a second, I called for a rescue", they have the paramedics as well. Our customer service feedback, countywide, our score out of a possible five for satisfaction is 4.85, and here in the city, just a little bit lower, 4.62, but they're still very happy with our service, so I'm pleased with that. And I'm very pleased with our times, our countywide average is seven minutes and eight seconds to life-threatening emergencies, and here in the city, it's five minutes and five seconds. So, we're two minutes under our average countywide. To fires, six minutes and 15 seconds countywide, here in the city, five minutes and 16 seconds. So, we've got great response times, we're continuing to work on those times, we just installed in all of our fire stations, a new alerting system that help, that will help diminish the time it takes to get the call to the guys, which translates into a quicker time to get to the emergency. Because although we look at every little part, I know all the person cares about when they call 911 is how long it's going to take to get to my door. They don't really care about how long it takes to dispatch, or get out of the station, or drive in this traffic. So, we continue to work on those times. But again, thank you for having me, I wanted to be short and sweet, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I, again, appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I'm impressed, you know, the Dade County has a great fire department, a bunch of good men and women in that department, you know, providing a credible service to the residents of Dade County, and especially us. I know for a fact that just about every single resident in this city is very grateful to have a rescue and to have a pumper. So, believe me, that improves our quality of life, and as a resident, I'm very thankful. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, do you have a part-time position for him? He's missing, he's missing the rescue truck.
We were talking.
He's missing, I tell you, sometimes I say, "I'm missing the rescue truck", see?
Maybe I can just hang out at the station.
Anytime, anytime. It becomes a part of you, I mean, even, and I'm sure the Vice Merrill test is, even the most crusty person that just can't wait to retire when it actually happens, it's a huge change. I mean, it's, you spend your life doing this, and it's a big, it's a big change, and I'm not looking forward to it, I'm on the tail end as well, and I'm not looking forward to it either, because this is all I know. But I heard retirement isn't bad, and I heard you usually work harder when you're retired, so.
Well, I have another question, it's true that the firefighters and the rescue people, like Captain Blanes, they're missing the comfortable bed they have in the station.
Maybe the bed, but they're probably not missing the interrupted sleep. When I left the truck to come to Daze, I said that, you know, there's a trade-off, but it's nice to sleep every night.
Chief, I think you should call him when it's time to wash the truck. He likes being outdoors.
No, but I do want to encourage you and any residents, I mean, that station, what those guys have done in that station is unbelievable, it really has become a work of art. The art that they've displayed, down to the last detail, I mean, they've painted their own dorms, different colors, installed different lighting, I mean, it's like a museum over there.
Home away from home.
It really is, and they've done a good job.
Took the words right out of my mouth, it becomes home away from home.
Absolutely.
You live there a third of your life.
Absolutely.
Just about, and like I say, when you're gone, it's a part of you, a part of you, you know, just, I'm not going to say dies, but it ceases to exist, and I miss it, I miss it dearly.
Do you have an application for part-time?
Always welcome, a brother firefighter is always welcome.
Yes, and I know you all love history, I'll make it brief, but I think that it should be noted for the chief and his staff, and obviously for this commission, some of you weren't here. Had Mr., and I want to say Vice Mayor Blanes' let's call it perseverance not been as it was, we probably would not have the pumper truck here today. I know that Vice Mayor Blanes worked diligently with Commissioner Sosa and Chief Paulison back there, and literally just basically followed that project from a, developing a concept for it until the day that, you know, we had the good fortune of getting Miami-Dade County to recognize the need for that pumper truck, so I thank you for your service, and for the service of all the men and women of your department as a resident of the city as well, but for bringing that service to our city, I think that's priceless, it really is, and so, thank you, Vice Mayor, for making that happen.
Thank you also for your diligence.
Had to keep nagging, you know, I mean.
I liked it, never bothers me.
I call it perseverance.
I like it.
Madam Manager, since the chief offered, I would love a tour one day, so maybe you can.
Absolutely. We will call you all.
Anytime, they're there, if they don't answer, they're on a run.
That's what I'm saying, I'll let the manager set that up, so I would love to see the inside.
Yeah, they've really done a great job with the station.
Perfect, thank you, we'll be happy.
Chief, thank you very much, I'm the Chair of the Board of Kendall Regional Hospital, and consistently in our meetings, in our board meetings, the work of your people, it's constantly commended. The type of work, the type of dedication, the empathy that they have is really unsurpassed. We recently installed a helipad, which I think you also operate that helicopter, right?
We do, yes.
And this is a fantastic thing, the thing that they do, I have been actually there when your people come and land in the helipad, and it's just a fantastic, it's indescribable, the type of thank you that we have within our hearts towards you and your department, and all of the people that work as a firefighter, and the life-saving instruments that you all have, thank you.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate that, and I too am proud of our men and women, they do a phenomenal job every day. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you all.
A last comment, one of the things, that many things, our residents, we, the people from West Miami, we're proud of our city, but one of the things that we, many of us, you know, brag around, is that we have a very nice fire station, an engine, a very big rescue truck, so really, it's a great thing to have that for our residents in our city.
Well, we're happy for it too.
And the way they run in that place is wonderful, I told you.
They do a great job.
Very professional.
And that station has a special place in my heart, because you'll see displayed there, the captain that passed away two years ago from cancer, Ralph Herrero, Ralph and I came on the job together, so I've known him since we started as firefighters, so, you know, seeing that, and the guy still embracing that is really important, and that goes back to the brotherhood that is hard to explain to anybody that hasn't experienced it, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
At this point, I would like to get back to the order of the agenda, which is item five.
Yes, item five, Report of the City Manager.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, I've given, I've provided you with a written report, it is dated today. The first item on that report is the update on the 2015 assessment role estimates, the Office of Property Appraiser issued the 2015 assessment estimates for the 2014 tax rolls, as on June 1, as prescribed by Florida statutes. Although we finished the 2013 final rolls with a small negative of 1.3%, next year looks a bit promising in terms of values. We are expecting and projecting a 5.3% increase in overall assessed values for budget purposes based on the overall assessment rolls valued at $317 million. This said, the final number will be published by the Office of the Property Appraiser through the DR420 form, which is a form that is developed by the Department of Revenue following a statutory formula. This form and the formula will give us the 95% required mileage for budget purposes, which is governed by that department, which is the Department of Revenue, and we will know, as we get closer into the budget mode and preparation, what that number will be. Right now, we are predicting that we will probably generate about an additional $90,000 to the revenue, general revenue dollars of the City of West Miami, but we're not there yet. But this gives us a good working tool, and we have actively started to work on the city budget. I've provided you with a hard copy of this this evening, however, you did get this information via email when we received that it was forwarded to you. The next item on my report talks to the issue of the body cameras for the police department, we are working with Robert Ruano, our grant writer, to see if we can obtain funding for body cameras for use by the West Miami Police Department. This is being pursued on the recommendation issued by our Chief of Police, following many law enforcement agencies in Miami-Dade County and nationwide. There are no assurances that we will receive said funding, and the Chief can and is prepared to answer any questions that you may have on body cameras, but we want to, we may want to wait until we're a little bit further along with the funding application and the possibility of the funding. The next item on my report is, actually, as a follow-up to the CDBG application, that the city applied to the Miami-Dade County with copies to the District 6 office for the expansion of the Garden Club Park. As you know, the city presented an application in the amount of $125,000, which would have a match from our park impact fees to the county. As a matter of information, CDBGs are very difficult to manage, because these are federal dollars, and there are a lot of national objectives and goals that we must meet in order to sustain that grant, in order to comply with the paperwork requirements. This said, I was advised by District 6 Commissioner Rebecca Sosa that the city could only get $10,000 for this coming year out of the CDBG. And based on my conversation with Mr. Penna, Mr. Ruano, and I think I've had this conversation individually with a couple of members of the City Commission, we have, unless you tell me otherwise, we've declined the $10,000, because the $10,000 will not even cover the administrative expenses associated with managing the grant. CDBG area targets low to low moderate income areas, and there's only a section of the city where this park is located that qualifies for CDBG money. That being said, we actually have to provide a roster of people who actually live in the area, because Miami-Dade County has to be assured that this CDBG is going to go to provide a service to these people who form part of the CDBG entitlement area, so the amount of work that has to, that we must produce to be able to comply with it, is not worth the funding at a $10,000 level. Therefore, I have declined, unless you instruct me otherwise, the Commissioner was very understanding, and realized and recognized that our application ranked number five, we were the top, in the top five applicants, so our application was an outstanding application. The problem is that I was advised by the Commissioner that there was not enough money to go around the 13 districts for the countywide projects, and so, they published a notice of funding availability, but they don't have the money to support these projects. Therefore, some people that have applied to similar applications are going to be considered for $2,000 or $3,000, well, there's really no sense of it, because the administrative end of it is very difficult, and it won't even cover the time. So, we declined it, I bring it to you, because as you know, I'm very transparent, and I like to involve you in all the decisions that are made here, and I think you have the absolute right to either stick to my recommendation, or tell me otherwise, and I'll be happy to pursue whichever way you choose. If you have any questions or need additional information, please advise.
Okay, do we have any questions or any comments?
I have a comment, Mayor, because I remember when we start with this CDBG and this, and they, when they, our city do not qualify for that, you know, low-income areas, and the only area who qualified for that was that.
Yes, sir.
A little piece of that, and I remember that we contemplated, since that time, that we have problems to get that money, because the rest of the city, they do not qualify as a low-income area, so, that's a problem that we cannot handle, I mean, we cannot change. They did the qualification for that.
Yes, they did, and basically, they determined by a national standard what areas of the city would qualify, and obviously, it's such a small portion that it really, it puts us in a bad position, because we apply, we do whatever it is that we need to do in terms of responding to ANOFA, which is what they call it, the Notice of Funding Availability, but there is a greater need in other communities, that's just, I'll give you an example, every time we apply for a COPS grant from the Department of Justice, we are not awarded the money, because we cannot substantiate it with a criminal data. Fortunately for us, we get declined, because there are other communities that have more statistics and more data to support, that they need additional officers funded by the federal government because of the crimes in the area, well, this is pretty much the same methodology that is used.
I think we have before, for the sidewalks or something.
Yes, sir.
That we tried to apply for the money, and they did not, we did not qualify for that.
The last time we were awarded for that area was $50,000 for the sidewalk, and that didn't take us very long.
It's a narrow area that they describe like qualify for that.
So, you decide, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, whether you would like to.
Any other comments?
Yes, I recall having the same issue not long ago, maybe a couple of years ago or so, and we were discussing the same, the same things that we're discussing now, it's a very small area, and it's just not feasible for us, it's sort of a double-edged sword, you know, I wish we could take the money, but we can't, because we would have to spend a lot more money than we're getting.
Exactly.
Okay, question, all in favor of the manager's decision?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, next item, on a pleasant note, Father's Day is soon approaching, this West Miami Community Center will celebrate Father's Day on Wednesday, June 17. We are assisting Chairman Suarez to prepare for that event, a calendar will be forthcoming, and Marilyn Mariah has set the date, and is coordinating for the music and all the events, so I will, my office will issue a calendar for all of you.
I want to make a comment, Yolanda.
Yes, sir.
That I will be out of town that day, the 17th, so I encourage the fathers that we have in this table to be there.
Can I go?
You're a mother.
I'm just checking.
You go by the mother, yes, I'm talking about the fathers, because it's Father Day, but you're welcome, and Mrs. Balaguer is welcome too, we are at least one of the fathers be present, please, because I would be not here.
I will be there.
Thank you. And last item on my report is a 4th of July 2015 celebration, we've executed a contract now with the Fireworks Unlimited vendor, and we're working on the event program, we are waiting for some written quotes for the event, and we should have a concrete program based on what you have traditionally celebrated, by June 17, it will be presented to the Mayor and City Commission. And the event, I'm happy to report, will be 100% sponsored by our corporate partners, so, we will bring you those names, and again, Mr. Mayor, you'll, I'm sure, set up something on the following agenda to recognize the sponsors. That concludes my report for this evening, thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, next item.
Item six, Report of the City Attorney.
There's no report by the City Attorney.
Okay, next item.
Item seven, Report of the City Engineers, none this evening. Item eight, Committee Reports, Report of the Mayor.
No report, anybody else, any other committee?
No.
Okay, next item.
Item nine, Citizen Presentations.
Okay, anybody for citizen presentation?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go on to item 11B then.
Item 10, Unfinished Business, none. Item 11B, Report by the Chief of Police in reference to the condition and mileage of police vehicles, and recommendation to purchase two police cruisers, this is by Chief Andrew, West Miami Police Department.
Can you read the resolution as well, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, waiving competitive bidding pursuant to Section 274AB, Article 4 of the Code of the City of West Miami, as an emergency, as a result of the city's need to replace two police cruisers, authorizing the city manager to purchase two police cruisers through a lease purchase program through Bancorp Municipal Lease Programs, authorizing the city manager to lease, purchase, and finance these two vehicles through the benefits of piggybacking through the Florida Sheriff's Program for a period of three years for a total amount not to exceed $60,000 for both cruisers, to be funded equally by police impact fees and equitable sharing funds, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Signal Tech Inc. for the purpose of outfitting said cruisers for use, for use as police vehicles, providing for terms and conditions for lease purchases, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I wanted to say a little something about the fire department, and it applies more so to the City of Miami, but I know the county does the same thing. All the years that we spent in homicide, Captain Ave and I, and I, we would go to the hospital when someone was shot, stabbed, or whatever, and there were certain times when you just got there, and you turned around, and you left, and you said, "Let's go do the medical examiner's report", the medical examiner's report, because this person's going to die." As the years progressed, equipment in the fire vehicles and the rescue vehicles, and more so the training and the dedication of the paramedics save a lot of lives that in the mid-'80s would have normally died. And that, I don't think anybody takes that into effect when they say, "Oh, homicide rates are down nationwide." Yeah, but is it, how much of that decline is due to improved emergency services by the paramedics and the hospitals? And they do do a fantastic job.
And if I may add, the enactment of the trauma system.
Yes.
And the trauma center. I mean, the trauma center that we have here in Dade County is world-class. It is second to none. As a matter of fact, each one of those rooms are equipped with a state-of-the-art equipment. Even the temperature in those rooms are up. It's warm. It's actually hot. If, you know, a normal person would walk into the room, they would, they would be hot because it is actually kept at a higher temperature in case the person is going into shock. The, you know, the heat has a tendency of helping the survival rate. So even in that respect, the trauma center that we have, along with all the equipment and training, I can tell you from personal experience that we've evolved incredibly.
It is.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. It's not taken into consideration often enough. Our police vehicles, we limited them to 100,000 miles because statistically nationwide, and even in our dealings with Mr. Penna in the mechanic shop, 100,000 is when the vehicles' transmissions start to go, major expenses, air conditioner compressors. So it's, if, in the long run, you figure out that that's the time, that's the cutoff. And both of these vehicles are a little bit over 100,000. Physically, on the outside, they're in good shape, so we're going to continue to use them for our reserve officers. We just added a few more reserve officers today because we have had a lot that have left, left to go to other departments. So these officers are going to need equipment. And the current ones that they're using are going to be put out on the streets as the scarecrows that you see whenever they're requested or they're needed. We don't know the exact figure. We're going to meet with them tomorrow with the people from Bancorp to find out and go through, contact through Ford. But it's, based on what we've purchased in the past, $60,000 should cover, I'm sure, both vehicles. They'll come in at under $30,000 apiece. They are the new, smaller versions you've seen. They call it, in the civilian market, it's called the Taurus, but they call it a police interceptor, but it's a smaller six-cylinder vehicle. I had a little reservations at the beginning that the cops wouldn't like it because of the small size, but the ones that we have, they really enjoy the car, maneuvers well. We've had no major mechanical problems that have had to gone back to the dealer, so they're working out very well.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. I need a motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Chief, these vehicles, they make it special for the police department. They upgrade the transmission, the engines, the cylinders, something?
There's a lot of upgrades. They've become heavier-duty because of the physical treatment that they're given. The high speed, the braking hard, the turning hard, the air conditioner being on, it has heavy-duty hoses. There are a lot. I don't know the specifics, but they call it the police interceptor package, and it does include a lot of those heavier-duty equipment.
It's a different vehicle inside.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, I don't know, maybe this was clarified, but I wasn't sure. The funding is coming from?
The funding is coming from equitable sharing and police department impact fees, which is used solely for capital improvement projects, so this would qualify for this type of purchase.
If we can further clarify, this will be at no cost to the taxpayers.
Correct.
To the residents of West Miami.
Correct.
This will not cost any of the residents.
Correct.
Any, any...
And again, equitable sharing is monies that is used from illegal criminals.
Seizures that are made, usually in drug-related transactions and so forth, money, vehicles, property that are seized. Because of our participation in that federal program, we receive a portion of those proceeds, and this is one of the items that is allowed to be purchased by equitable sharing funds.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
Okay. Our motion. Ms. Mayor?
Yes. One other thing that I should add to what the chief was saying is this. Police vehicles are a complete need for the security of the city of West Miami's residents. A vehicle with 100,000 miles in it, and you have to consider also that whenever they're stopped, they're not going anywhere, but they're still, the air conditioning must be turned on. So the damage caused to the motor is a fantastic issue as well. Not having two patrol cars in the street is, goes out to the detriment of the citizens of the city of West Miami. This is an absolute need. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So in conversation with the city manager, we recommended, and the city manager agreed, that the commission approve this purchase as an emergency purchase since we did not go out to an actual bid, but in addition, we went out through the sheriffs.
The Florida sheriff's bid, every year, they go out and they request bids from all the major dealers, Dodge, Ford, Chevy, for everything, from vehicles to fire trucks, tires, equipment, and they obviously obtained the lowest possible pricing, and we've been using the Florida sheriff's bid for the past many, many years.
In other words, we're piggybacking on them.
Correct.
So we have to issue, you have to prove that it is an emergency, and you have to prove also that this is a piggyback, what's right by you.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Okay. Can you read the next item, please? Item D and E, please?
Yes. Item 11D, this is a report by the Director of Public Works in reference to sewer pump breakdown and recommendation of replacement of same by Director of Public Works. Item 11E, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami waiving competitive bidding pursuant to Section 274AB, Article 4 of the Code of the City of West Miami, as an emergency, as a result of a failure of a pump at lift station number three located at Silvania Boulevard and 11th Street, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement contract with Hydra Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $13,875.50 to repair said pump under repair quote Pompex K107TCA3307 to be paid from Phase Two Sanitary Sewer System Repair Account 237, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
You shopping again?
Another one bites the dust. No, this is, this is repair, this is repair. One of our expensive sewer pumps in front of Mr. Blanes's house has gone down, and we need to fix it and put it back in.
I know.
So unfortunately, they're expensive pumps, and that's what it costs to overhaul this one. Actually, it's a little bit cheaper than others, so it didn't get damaged that badly.
Madam Manager, where's the funding coming from?
Phase Two Sanitary Sewer System, it's, we've been taking these into account at the rate of two a year, and I think that pretty soon, we're going to have to, as the system ages, and again, this is similar to the running of the police vehicles. These are pumps that are operating every single day. We have an aging system now, believe it or not, and it requires more maintenance, so these are issues that we need to keep very close to our budget process.
And in addition, Mr. Mayor, the other issue is that, again, this is something that inures to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of West Miami. You don't want to have a sewer pump on operational. You need to have that immediately. You just can't wait to just go out to the newspapers and go and advertise and so on and so forth. So I've been assured by Mr. Penna and the manager that this is just about the best and the cheapest price that you could get from the best company. Is that correct, Mr. Penna?
Yes.
And in addition, you have to have that repaired immediately. So again, you have to consider this as an emergency and also authorize the manager to go out with a company that they have recommended as the correct company to work with.
I make a motion.
I want to make a comment before, I want to make a comment. Number one, that we already, in the hurricane season, started in June 1st.
That's right.
And all these systems, you know, are connected, all these systems have to be working. And another question is this, or the question is this, how old those pumps are? They're a couple of years already.
And they are 15 years old.
15? Yeah, I know, a couple of years, you see there. I second, you second already?
I did.
You did?
But I'll let you, we can both second together.
I just wanted to make a comment about the hurricane and...
Can we clarify? Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Second.
Vice Mayor Blanes, and second by Commissioner Rodriguez.
And third by Commissioner Suarez.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Okay. On the vote, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Before we go into the next item, I just want to remind everybody that the budget time is coming, and just keep it in the back of your mind. We need to build up the reserve in these accounts to make sure that they don't become an emergency, and then we have to borrow from Peter to pay Paul. So the pumps are getting old, and we need to have those monies available. So just keep it in the back of your mind.
Mr. Mayor, along with that presentation, you, I've just made a note to myself, you're going to get a memo with a list of all the pumps, all the locations, when they were last replaced, and the average life of the pump. So we can have that for future years as well.
Excellent. Sure.
Thank you. Next item, please?
Item 11F, Selection of Public Hearing Dates for the 2015-2016 City Budget. This is by City Manager, Mayor and City Commission.
And here we go again. Budget process is upon us. As prescribed by statutes and by our Code of Ordinances, the submittal of the manager's budget is scheduled for your City Commission meeting on July 15. It is only the submittal. At that time, you will have to establish some preliminary or tentative mileage rates and follow a protocol that is set by the statutes and by the Department of Revenue. So the reason that I bring this to your attention now is particularly, in September, we must have two public hearings to comply with the statutory requirements. Briefly before the meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor, and following the timeline schedule that I've provided you with a copy, which is published by the Department of Revenue, there are certain dates and times that we must schedule our meetings to comply with the Department of Revenue requirements, and they can, these meetings cannot be in conflict with the Miami-Dade County Public Schools and the Board of County Commission budget hearing process. That being said, in your pocket, or separate from your pocket, the clerk provided you with a calendar that we prepared this afternoon, and if we can go through these dates, Monday, September 7th is a holiday. It is Labor Day, and we observe that. So we are proposing that the first tentative budget hearing be held on September 8th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:30 PM. And we need to set these dates, you know, we need to have these dates already available. We had originally thought about a Wednesday, September 9th. However, the Miami-Dade County Public Schools has their final budget meeting day on that day. So if that meeting is acceptable to you, you can decide tonight based on the timeline schedule that we have. Again, the final budget hearing cannot conflict with the counties or the school board, so due to the timeline involved with the legal advertisement that comes with the budget process, we need a few days to tweak the budget if this commission desires to make any changes along the way. That being said, we are looking at September 23rd, which is a Wednesday night at 7:30 PM, for the public hearing on the city budget, the final budget hearing. So that takes you to four meetings during the month of September. I asked the clerk for the next agenda to publish or to actually see whether you would like to entertain, A, an August cancellation, and B, the possibility of canceling one meeting in September.
The 16th.
The 16th, so that we can get our ducks in a row in terms of compliance with the state on the budget process.
The August is the 19th, correct?
Yes. Yes. Usually, you do cancel one meeting in August for summer recess, summer recess, and due to the fact that you've got four meetings and you're only required to have one regular meeting pursuant to code for the regular City Commission, we can have one meeting, a regular meeting, and then the other two meetings dedicated to the budget process, if that's acceptable to you.
So canceling the 16th?
That would be canceling September 16th, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Any?
No, that's fine with me.
It's fine with me. I checked my calendar.
I will be out of the country from September 15 to October 2nd, October 3rd.
September 16?
15.
15?
October 2nd or 13, or October 2nd or 3rd.
Mr. Mayor, I, I mean, it would be excellent to have a full commission for the budget process.
Yeah, but I have already...
Right, right, right.
I have already these things...
Planned, pre-planned.
And done, and...
Any solutions, or no?
The problem is, is that we can't stack these meetings because of the Department of Revenue regulations. We can't do anything to have your final hearing prior to the 15th because it would be in conflict with the Miami-Dade County Public Schools. We cannot hold a meeting pursuant to statute anytime, the first meeting before September 4th.
And no later than?
And no later than the 25th of September.
Okay. All right. The dates are fine with me. What about the rest of the commission?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Fine with me.
All right. So...
Well, the commissioner will be here for the first meeting, for the first budget meeting, correct, Commissioner Suarez? That would be on the, on the 8th, if the commission approves it?
Yeah, the 8th, yes.
I mean, most of your changes or additions, deletions, any major ticket items will probably be taken up at the tentative budget hearing and then ratified during your final hearing process. So hopefully, we'll have a full commission for that one.
Okay.
So we are canceling the 16th?
If this commission desires. I need to ask Mr. Villalobos whether we should put the cancellation of these two meetings on the next agenda ratifying this action?
A cancellation of two meetings or a cancellation of one meeting?
One meeting in August, as the commission always does, for a summer break, and most commissions in Miami-Dade County do break during the month of August. And then the one meeting to comply with our code in September, and then schedule two special meetings and public hearings on the budget.
Did we say which one we're canceling in August? Did I miss that?
The 19th.
The 19th.
We're canceling the 19th, okay. Thank you.
And the 16th is September.
Perfect.
And my question would be to the city attorney, if I may, just to make sure we're complying, is should we have that as an agenda item ratifying, ratifying this action?
Yes, you should.
So it'll appear for ratification at the next commission meeting?
Please don't put anything on September 25th.
No.
Anything else?
Thank you.
So all in favor of the proposed calendar from the manager, say aye?
Aye.
Next item?
Item 11G, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Interdepartmental Transfers Before the End of the Fiscal Year, September 30, 2015, as prescribed by Charter, Section 510, titled Transfer of Funds Between Departments by Mayor and City Commission.
Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this keeps with a yearly request that we bring to you three months prior to the end of each fiscal year as prescribed by Section 510... prior to the end of each fiscal year as prescribed by Section 5-10 of the City Charter of the City of West Miami, that enable this office to basically clean, and what we do is basically clean out our general accounting trial balances, because, believe it or not, the auditors are soon to come back on board and start their process. What happens during those transfers is, let's say, for example, that Mr. Penna has an account within the Public Works Division to, where he purchases chemicals for sanitizing the city proper, the facilities, and he spends more money, but he's got some savings in another, in the Streets Department. Well, that, those savings go to, to basically subsidize the additional dollars that have been spent in the purchase of chemicals or cleaning supplies within the facilities and maintenance. So it's basically within the funds, allowing the transfer to take place, so these negatives can be basically wiped out before the auditors come in here and we provide with, them with the trial balance. It's done every year, and consistently, there is a resolution on file since way back.
Motion?
Every year.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item, item H?
Item 11H, report of the city manager in reference to computer software for the city's general accounting system and recommendation to upgrade by city manager. Would you like me to read item I as well, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Item 11I, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami waiving competitive bidding pursuant to Section 274A B, Article 4 of the Code of the City of West Miami as an emergency as a result of the city's need for immediate computer system upgrade, authorizing the city manager to amend the existing agreement with Xerox Corporation for the purpose of upgrading the city's general accounting system that includes the PACE accounting, the accounts receivable, and utility billing program, to a cloud-based program based on seven seats defined by the computer stations, PCs that are connected to the Xerox remote server, providing benefits and cost savings for the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to appropriate the necessary funds for the 2015-16 city budget for the next five years, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. In the packet, you will find an email that was sent to our finance director, Mercedes Leon, by Xerox. Basically, Xerox supports our general accounting system, or what we call the PACE system. Actually, technology is so far advanced that we failed to be able to catch up, and they have been servicing our general accounting system for many years. They're going to a cloud-based program and basically have put us on notice that they will no longer be able to service our, our software system using the tape backup system that we utilize presently. There are certain benefits to the new software proposal, and those are laid out in the email that was sent to Mrs. Leon on March 3rd of this year from Xerox. Basically, this is a cloud base where all of our information, the nightly and the quarterly backups, will be done for the city, so that's something less that the accounting staff will have to do, and it is based up in the cloud. The operating release levels will always be up to date. The city's data will be secured, which is very important in today's day and age, and the backups are stored at an off-site location. The hardware and the software maintenance pricing, every year that we have to pay for a maintenance renewal fee contemplated in the budget, will go away because the proposal contains a, either a one, two, three, four, five, or up to a six-year program where the city, where they will support usage of seven stations, workstations, to basically host our general accounting system. Our general accounting system is the accounts payables, the accounts receivables, the utility billing, the trial balances, your fixed assets inventory, and everything that deals with the finances of the city of West Miami. I briefly spoke to the mayor before the meeting, and obviously, again, we're trying to catch up to technology, and it's quickly running away from us. They've given us a six-year proposal. I would entertain a five-year proposal only because technology is just so advanced that anytime we're done paying for something, we kind of have to jump in and be prepared to embrace new technology. And the mayor suggested that we get the, also the input from Mr. Quintana, who's so knowledgeable, our IT department, to make sure that he's comfortable that, you know, with five years, getting into a commitment of five years for an annual amount of $24,631.66 will be able to encompass all the functions of the accounting system while keeping up with technology. So I wouldn't ask you to consider anything longer than five years at this point.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, this is obviously something that we're going to need, you know, we have no choice. But the reason I mention the IT department, Mr. Quintana, is, and I'll give you a quick example. Some 20 years ago, I did a study in my other hat, in the profession of architectural, for the FIU library, okay? At the time, we were thinking about building a building on top of a building, and we did a 20-year study, you know, looking at the future. And based on that 20-year study, the building after 20 years needed to be like 15 stories. The current building at FIU is less than that. But the caveat back then says, why, since we're going to build this building in the future, why don't we reinforce the foundation, and we pay for that right now to prepare for the future? Well, the factor that was missing at that point when we made that 20 years ago is we didn't think about the internet. And to prove a point, that building might never be the 15 stories, because it's not necessary. Now, the FIU library, you know, what we studied, the increase of the car catalog, the increase of the books and so on, it's not going to happen. Basically, the library now is used for, students go there to study, because everything is on the net. So bringing it back to our city here, you know, in today's technology, a five-year contract, it's long. The technology is changing so fast. You buy a server today, and six months from now, that server is almost obsolete, you know, a computer, I mean, it's going so fast that it's exponential, how fast, you know, we're progressing. So I would say, why, you know, if we approve it, and we should, you know, have the financial department, you know, the numbers people, meet with the technical people and make the right decision, and let that, you know, let them determine which is the best plan, you know? The one year, the two years, the six years, whatever it is, rather than us fixing it on a five-year. That's my suggestion.
Let me have a comment. Now, according with the plans we have, the buildings are being constructed, plus that one, the new project coming, I think, so we will have actually about 700 units in our city. In two, three, four years, we will have 700 new units. That means we will have 2,000 new residents in the city of West Miami.
At least.
Well, you know, just making the normal proportions. That will, that, this mean that we will have 700 more water account, waters in the account system. And our system is more or less the same, you know, for what Yolanda said, payable, receivable, bills, more or less it's the same. I mean, the technology is growing, but our services will be more or less the same, so I think you going by five years, in my opinion, it's okay, because we have no changes that that, you know? And we, in five years, proposal, like you said, is not bad, because we don't look for new things every day. But let me tell you, Mr. Mayor, let me tell you, commissioners, let me tell you, Yolanda Aguilar, congratulations, it's about time that we go to the modern world with the cloud for this, you know, the tape and all this old-fashioned.
Yeah.
It's about time to do this. I 200% agree with this. We have to do these things because we are going to a city with more people and better systems and more demanding, more demanding people, more educated people. So I agree totally, that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, you know, we need a motion, you heard my suggestion, so.
I make a motion.
Okay.
But that motion is on your suggestion, correct?
On my suggestion, to, to.
Yes.
Not go with, at the end, at the end of the discussion, Commissioner, I'm speaking. At the end of the discussion, it might be a five-year program. All I'm saying is, let's not fix it to five years, because this is a legal document, once we approve it, you know, let the administration make the right decision by having the financial people sit with the, with the technical people. That's it, that's all I'm.
Let me clarify, my motion was not about years. I just make a comment on it.
Okay.
My motion is, a motion to do this.
I second, I second, based on the mayor's suggestion.
And you're, for purpose of clarification, you're authorizing the manager to have the ultimate decision over whether it's five years or six years?
That is correct.
And I go about the cloud.
Yes.
My motion is, is here, to go to the cloud and the modern world.
But there's, there's, there's a friendly amendment, and this says very specifically, five years, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think what you would like to do is for us to go back, and you've given us a preliminary approval to go to five years.
No, 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 I'm not saying preliminary approval. I don't want to bring, I'm not, I'm not bringing this back and back and thinking about it again, no, 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 we got to move fast. I agree with Commissioner Suarez, we got to move fast, this is, we should have done this some time ago.
Yeah.
So let's not, let's not put it in the back burner.
The years, whatever you decide, they're experts.
Okay.
But to bring in the Information Technology Department to make sure that we're entering into the correct timeframe for the purchase of this software.
That is correct.
And the decision will be up to the manager.
That is correct.
For five years or six years?
That is correct, good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes with the recommended amendments.
Thank you. Go to the order.
Good night.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.